Good evening to the Board of Commissioners and to the Douglas County citizens. Please, we are so delighted that you're here to join us in our, on our Tuesday, August 17, 2021 Legislative Board of Commissioners meeting. I will call this meeting to order. With us today, Board of Commissioners, we have with us, before I start, certainly acknowledge our pastor, certainly would like to just acknowledge you, the Board of Commissioners, with roll call. District One Commissioner Henry Mitchell III.
Present.
District Two Commissioner and Vice Chairman Kelly Robinson.
Present.
District Three Commissioner Tarynia Carthen.
Present.
District Four Commissioner Anne Geider.
Present.
Ramona Jackson Jones, Chairman, present. Board of Commissioners, we do have a quorum. We're going to move on, Board of Commissioners, into our invocation. We are delighted to have with us here tonight Senior Pastor Revan Orlando Evans. He's graced us before, and I'm so happy you're back. And Revan Evans represent Bright Star United Methodist Church. And Board of Commissioners, subsequent to the invocation, I ask that you please join me in the Pledge to the Flag. Thank you so much, Pastor Orlando Evans. You have the floor.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. Tonight, let's draw inspiration from First Kings, Chapter Three, verses five through six and nine, and it reads, "At Gibeon, the Lord appeared to Solomon in a dream by night. And God asks, 'What should I give to you?'" And Solomon said, "You have shown great and steadfast love to your servant, my father David, because he walked before you in faithfulness, in righteousness, in an uprightness of heart towards you, and you have kept for him this great and steadfast love, and have given him a son to sit on his throne today. Give your servant, therefore, an understanding mind to govern your people and to discern between good and evil; for who can govern this, your great people?" This is the word of God for the people of God. Thanks be to God. In today's scripture, King Solomon experienced a divine encounter with the Most High God. He had just lost his father after inheriting the throne. He had recently gained influence that affected the region, and to make matters more interesting, he was granted a wish by the Lord. God appeared to Solomon in a dream, and as their conversation began, he started it with a powerful word, "Ask." I wonder, when God is listening, what will you ask? Will it be power to move up the political spectrum? Will it be favor to extend your elected term? Or will it be something that helps you to maximize your ability to be a blessing to others? When God invited Solomon to ask, he didn't respond by enriching himself, but instead focused on becoming a blessing to the people that he was called to lead. He asked God for an understanding mind and an ability to discern good from evil. He requested wisdom. As we prepare to pray, let us also do the same. Gracious God, you are ruler over heaven and earth. You are king of kings and lord of lords. You are leadership embodied in spirit. You are maker of all things good. You created us in your image and gave us dominion over the earth. As we continue to govern your people, we ask that you grant us wisdom to discern good from evil, that you would help us to distinguish right from wrong, and that you would give us the courage to make decisions that protect and empower the people who we are called to serve. May our actions bring honor to you. May your presence fill this chamber and lead us in all truth. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Evans, for gracing us with an amazing prayer, particularly over the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Douglas County. We appreciate you coming in and certainly love what you're doing at Bright Star, United Methodist. Thank you. Board of Commissioners, certainly, let me check with the clerk. Clerk, do we have any public comment tonight?
Yes, ma'am, we have two individuals sign up to speak tonight.
Okay. All right. We have, I see the list here before me, we have Ms. Wanda White. Ms. Wanda White, would you please come forth? Yes, Ms. White, please restate your name and give us your address and your subject matter. Is Jermaine to the agenda, I believe? You can...
Yes, Wanda White, 6640 Pine Knott's Drive, Douglasville 30135.
Pull your mic down. Pull the mic down.
How's that? Better?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now? This is in regards to, I'm speaking tonight in regards to my understanding that the part-time aides are now going to be made full-time aides. And again, I've lived here all my life, many, many years, and I've just never seen this county so messed up as far as debt, taxes. Last year, we were hit with taxes. This year, we're going to be hit with taxes. It's just got to stop. What I don't understand is, if the aides are going to be full-time, then what are the commissioners going to do? I mean, what do y'all do? I mean, you got somebody doing your work for you? So, I mean, why is my tax dollars paying for aides when that's what y'all were elected for? That's what y'all were elected to do, is to do this job, not to hire other people to do it for you. In my understanding, the aides are going to make more than what first responders, law enforcement officers, and most of the people at the courthouse make. So how can that be? Moving on, also too, my other concern was, unless I missed it at the general session or the last session, whatever you guys call it, I don't remember this even being spoken of about anybody getting contracts or the full-time, part-time people being made to full-time. So therefore, I only saw this yesterday. So it's my understanding that this was just put in yesterday, which to me kind of seems like it's trying to get snuck in a little bit because nobody knew about it. I mean, there's, there's three or four people here to express our opposition because nobody knew about it. So that's a big concern to me. I mean, I just don't get the fact that, you know, we're going to pay this, and if we didn't have these, we could also save $160,000 a year on, say, full-time aides, and that would include their benefits, their insurance, their paid time off, their sick time. I don't see that we need it, not at all. I'm not very happy with how it was handled. I don't think that we were given enough time for people to discuss what was going on here. I hope you guys will consider this as something that it needs to be postponed or readdressed or looked at, or whatever the verbiage on that may be. But I think we just need to stop spending. I mean, we just spend a whole bunch of money on giving the coroner a bunch of money, the probate judge a bunch of money, but you want to raise my taxes eventually? And I mean, and that's not, that's not good. That comes out of my pocket. I mean, here's my thing, if you ain't got time to do your job, then step down and let somebody else do it, save my tax dollars, everybody else's tax dollars, and let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. White.
Clerk, are you keeping managing the time?
Okay, good, thank you. We have Ms. Bachelor next, Ms. Sharon Bachelor. Are you here?
Oh, there she is. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Bachelor, 6331, South Skyline Drive, Douglasville. And thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to, I would like to talk about item number eight on the agenda, making commissioners legislative aides full-time with benefits and increasing their salaries. First, I think Commissioner Mitchell should abstain from voting on this because of his relationship to his aide. Why did you raise our taxes 27% last year? You told us you didn't have enough money to pay the bills. How is that now? All of a sudden, you have enough money to double budgets and salaries and add on full-time help with benefits? Why can't the commissioners do their jobs anymore? In the past, legislative aides were not needed. Our population has increased less than 10% in 10 years to 145,000. We have less people than Paulding County, population 178,000. Therefore, commissioners and chairman use only one full-time assistant and two part-time assistants. They get the job done with less help and a larger population. Carroll County, population 124,000, has six commissioners and one chairman, and they employ only one assistant. Why can people in Carroll County do their jobs without legislative aides and you can't? Cahueta County, population 154,000, has four commissioners and one chairman. They have two full-time aides. The commissioners in these counties answer their own emails and phone calls and set up their own town halls. Our commission has two full-time assistants in the office and three part-time legislative aides, and you still can't do your jobs. Why do you want to pay these aides more than first responders? Is this fair to other county employees who have been around longer and work harder? How many more town halls have you had since hiring aides? Are you answering all of your emails? My last one was forwarded to someone else, and I still don't know the answer to my question. If you appropriate money to yourselves for aides, Commissioner Geider should be given the same amount to be added to her salary since she is doing her job and an aide's job. Are you also giving raises to the two assistants who work in the office? You all do not need full-time aides. You don't even need part-time aides. You need to do your own jobs that you were elected to do. If you can't do it, then get out of the office.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bachelor. We certainly would take this matter into advisement. Clerk, we have anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. What we're going to do, Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on to our next item. We have, Board of Commissioners, you have, before you, the minutes. We will move accordingly to approve the minutes. You have the Commission Minute Meeting, I mean, the Meeting Minutes of August 3, 2021, the Work Session Minutes of August 2, 2021, and also the Executive Session Minutes of August 2, 2021. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections that need to be made, Board?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Being none, the minutes stand approved. All right, Board of Commissioners, we're going to move. We have a proclamation tonight. It's quite exciting. We're here, we will recognize the 100 Black Men of Douglas County Incorporated. Our own Commissioner Carthen will read the proclamation, and after the proclamation, I believe we have one, two, three, four members will ask you all to come up once our commissioner finishes the proclamation, and once we vote, we'll take a photograph. Is that fair? Thank you. Commissioner Carthen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. This proclamation is for the 100 Black Men of Douglasville Incorporated. Whereas, the 100 Black Men of America Incorporated approved the charter for the 100 Black Men of Douglasville, Georgia on Friday, March 13, 2020, in an effort to provide servant leadership in Douglas County, Georgia. And whereas, with its mission to improve the quality of lives by enhancing the education, economic development of the community with a primary focus on mentoring young African-American males, and whereas, having initiated the 100 Club Mentoring Program in August of 2019 at the Douglas County Success Center, followed by the Junior 100 Club for 8th Graders at Chestnut Bog Middle School, and whereas, the 100 Black Men of Douglasville are also involved in a variety of community engagements to include virtual social reform events to address mental health in our local community, providing 1,000 masks to residents in local apartment complexes during the COVID-19 pandemic, and distributing over 1,000 food boxes for residents. And whereas, partnering with the city of Douglasville and collaborating with Walgreens to administer COVID-19 vaccinations to community residents during the National Juneteenth Holiday Weekend. And whereas, the 100 Black Men of Douglasville, Georgia is making a tremendous impact on the lives of every member of our community with its dedication to leadership, education, and mentoring, economic empowerment, as well as health and wellness. Now, therefore, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, on this 17th day of August 2021, do hereby acknowledge, celebrate, and honor 100 Black Men of Douglasville's Incorporated commitment to the youth in Douglasville and their honorable service to the community. So read this day.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen, and certainly this is an honorable moment for our 100 Black Men of Douglas County, and so proud that you're here as we honor you tonight. Certainly, Board of Commissioners, you have heard this proclamation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Board of Commissioners? Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and duly noted, being, being here for four terms and seeing the county turn, and recognizing that they are partners now in the community to help address social equality, mental health, an atmosphere that has been created in this county, but yet it needs to be fulfilled. I am so encouraged by the presence of the 100 Black Men. It is an absolute honor to stand here with this proclamation, knowing that this county is shifting, that there is a diversity of needs that need to be addressed out there in the community, and your presence is definitely welcome. Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Any other remarks, Board? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Okay, Board of Commissioners, we have a 5-0 unanimous vote and a motion carries. Thank you so much. Could we have the 100 Black Men to come up with us and take a photograph?
Take a couple pictures here.
Yes.
On three. One, two, three.
All right, thank you again to our 100 Black Men of Douglas County, and appreciate everything you're doing to, for our youth, and also just to help move Douglas County forward. All right, Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on to our next item, which is a public hearing. The public hearing is to consider amending the Douglas County Code of Ordinances by adding an ordinance regarding the official requirements of the legal organ in accordance to the state statute. We had our first reading on yesterday, and certainly would love to our Director of External Affairs to come forth and please grace us with the second reading and allow us to go from here.
Thank you, Chairman Jones, Board of Commissioners, County Administrator Sue Benan. I will now read the...
Excuse me, it's our second, second and final reading. Okay, there you go. You have it, it's just me.
Thank you. I will now read the proposed ordinance. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Douglas County, Georgia, here and after county, under the authority of its county code and constitution and laws of the state of Georgia, must designate an official newspaper for legal advertising. And whereas, OCGA Section 913142 sets out the requirements that newspapers must satisfy to be declared the official organ of a county for the publication of official or legal advertising. And whereas, the issue has been duly considered by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, now therefore being ordained by the Chairman and Douglas County Board of Commissioners, and it is hereby ordained by the authority thereof as follows. No journal or newspaper published in Douglas County shall be declared, made, or maintained as the official organ of the county for the publication of sheriff's sales, citations of probate court judges, or any advertising commonly known in terms of official or legal advertising, and required by law to be published in such county official newspaper unless the newspaper shall meet and maintain the following qualifications. Newspaper as used in this code section means a printed product of multiple pages containing not greater than 75% advertising content and no more than one half of its issues during the previous 12 months, excluding separate advertising supplements inserted into but separately identifiable from any regular issue or issue of the newspaper. The newspaper shall be published within the county and continuously, at least weekly, for a period of two years or is the direct successor of such a newspaper. Failure to publish for not more than two weeks in any calendar year shall not disqualify a newspaper otherwise qualified. For a period of two years prior to the designation and thereafter, the newspaper shall have and maintain at least 75% paid circulation as established by an independent audit. Paid circulation shall not include newspapers that are distributed for free or in connection with a service or promotion at no additional charge to the ultimate recipient. For circulation to be considered paid, the recipient of the newspaper or such recipient's employer or household must pay reasonable and adequate consideration for the newspaper. No rules of circulation of audit companies, the United States Postal Service, or accounting principles may be considered in determining paid circulation if they are inconsistent with the provisions of the subsection. Based on the published results of the 1990 United States Decennial Census or any future such census, the newspaper shall have and maintain at least the following paid circulation within Douglas County to be designated the legal organ newspaper. 500 copies per issue if the county population is less than 20,000. 750 copies per issue if the county has a population of at least 20,000 but more than, but less than 100,000. Or 1,500 copies per issue if the county has a population of 100,000 or greater. And for the purpose of this code section, paid circulation shall include home or mail delivery, subscription sales, counter, vendor, and news rack sales, and sales to independent newspaper contract carriers for resale. Paid circulation shall not include multiple copies purchased by one entity unless the multiple copies are purchased for and distributed to the purchasers offices, officers, employees, or agents or within the purchaser's household. However, if the county has no journal or newspaper that meets the qualifications set forth in subsection A of this code section, the official organ may be designated by the judge of the probate court, the sheriff, and the clerk of the superior court. A majority of these officers governing from among newspapers otherwise qualified to be a legal organ that meet the minimum circulation in the preceding subsection for the county, or if there is no such newspaper, that a newspaper having the greatest general paid circulation in the county. Any selection or change in the official organ of the county shall be made upon the concurrent action of the judge of the probate court, the sheriff, and the clerk of the superior court of the county or a majority of these officers. No change in the official organ shall be effective without the publication for four weeks of notice of the decision to make a change in the newspaper in which legal advertisements have been previously published. All changes in the official legal organ shall be made effective on January 1 unless the change has to be made where there is no other qualified newspaper. Notwithstanding the other provisions of this code section, an official organ of the county meeting the qualifications under the statute enforced at the time of its appointment and which was appointed prior to July 1, 1999, may remain the official organ of the county until a majority of the judge, I'm sorry, until a majority of the judge of the probate court, the sheriff, and the clerk of the superior court determine to appoint a new official organ for the county. During the month of December in each year, the judge of the probate court of the county shall notify the Secretary of State on a form supplied by the Secretary of State of the name and the mailing address of the journal or newspaper currently serving as the official organ of the county. The judge of the probate court shall also likewise notify the Secretary of State of any change in the official organ of the county at the time that such change is made. The Secretary of State shall maintain at all times a current listing of the names and addresses of county organs, and shall make such lists available to any person upon request. Be it further reserved that all ordinances or resolutions or parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are repealed. This ordinance being approved and shall become effective on the day it's approved.
Thank you so much, Director Stanley, Stuart Stanley. Okay, Board of Commissioners, you have heard the, certainly, well, we're still in public hearing mode. Okay. Thank you so much, again, Ms. Tiffany Stuart Stanley. Board of Commissioners, it's your pleasure, certainly, I will open this public hearing. This public hearing is now open. For those who want to, if you are for this public hearing, please feel free to come up and make some remarks. Anyone against the public hearing? Being none, this public hearing is now closed. Okay, Board of Commissioners, do you have any comment before I call the question?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Yeah, just for the record, it was, the public hearing should be for those who are in favor of the change of this legislation or against, but it was more semantics, I wanted to make sure it's established.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I yield back, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Geider.
Did we not have an ordinance on the legal organ here in the county? Is that why we're amending the code?
That is correct. We did not have anything in writing. This is, again, and, again, it aligns with the state, yes.
Since it's a law, we're bound by the law, or we're not? I don't, I don't understand what the purpose of this is. I know, I did read it, and it's, it seems to be verbatim of the state law, but if we're under the law, I don't understand why we're doing it, but I guess it's a cleanup, maybe?
Mm-hmm, perhaps.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, I'm...
I yield back.
Any other questions, Board? Okay, I'll call the question. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to consider amending the Douglas County Code of Ordinances by adding an ordinance regarding the official requirements of the legal organ in accordance to the state statute?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Board? We have a motion and a second. Please prepare to cast your votes. Thank you so much, we have a 5-0 unanimous vote, Board of Commissioners, and the motion carries. All right, Board of Commissioners, we can move right into our new business items. Tab number six is appointment of Oric Curry to the Planning and Zoning Board to represent District 2 effective immediately. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? We have a motion and a second, please prepare to cast your votes. We have a 5-0 unanimous vote and the motion carries. Board of Commissioners, that leads us right into tab number seven, authorization for the chairman to execute employee contracts for restructuring purpose, purposes for Frederick Perry, Tiffany Stuart Stanley, Alexandra Benton Court, Robert H. Coward, Dr. Quinsella Gilchrist, Jason Millholland, John R. Tison Jr., and James Worgington. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion, board?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Guyer?
It's not a discussion, it's just to clarify to the public that this was requested by the new county administrator. As a restructuring of her organization, thank you. I yield back.
All right, thank you, any other discussion, board?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
The county is changing, contrary to perhaps perceptions, beliefs. It has grown, it's been grown. Our county administrator inherited 26 direct reports. It's not sustainable, no more than anybody else had managed that span of control. At the same point, there's an intent to realize better efficiencies with this reorganization. This is material, and I don't want to go without, like, a lot of thought went into this organization restructure. We spent 48 hours in a retreat, conversations were held. There was never not transparency regarding what the intent, what the board was going to do. You had to pay attention, right? This was coming, it was just a matter of time, right? And so with that, with this decision, the county moves forward. You've got new leadership that will now lead it for the next 150 years, right? This is the baseline, like, okay now, let's go, right? No, this has been, this has been here, right? This thing has to become more efficient. I mean, to that point, there was never any dedicated resources toward anything, it was just allowed. And now, there's an expectation that now we have a professional manager that will run this county going forward, and she has now assembled a team. And we appreciate all those who were selected and all those who were called upon, and so now, that's what this is about. I can't let this go by, just, we just, no, there's no slipping through. This is intentional, to recalibrate our government, to take it to a whole nother level. And I'm proud of this organizational structure, no, I got behind it. I won't separate her from, I got behind this 100, because it's something I've been crying out for, for some time, as I look at the citizens, and I'm looking at the delivery of these services, it's like, well, it takes, it takes leadership, an awakened leadership. Like, I get it, I get compensation, I'm ready to have that conversation for everybody else, but it starts with the top. And that being said, ma'am chair, I've taken sufficient time to winter my position on this matter so that it's not hidden as if like, okay, we were asleep about this, no, this is material, let it be so. Ma'am Chair, I yield, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Okay, we're going to move on, we have a motion and a second, please prepare to cast your We have a 5-0 unanimous vote and the motion carries, and I just wanted to just, certainly just kind of dovetail on what our vice chairman just mentioned, we have a new leader with new ideas, and I'm glad the board has provided latitude for her to execute a budget neutral plan, which I'm so proud of, and it will allow our organizational structure to elevate our ability to be more efficient and also better functioning as an organization as we provide services to the citizens here in Douglas County. So I am just honored to see a step into the 21st century, and Douglas County is moving from ordinary to extraordinary. So, just I hope the citizens have buckled up and they see all the work that's being done out, outside the borders of just this room, and you will continue to see great things to come. So, Board of Commissioners, thank you for allowing our county administrator to make us more efficient. We're going to move on to tab number eight, Board of Commissioners, certainly tab number eight is authorization for the chairman to execute employee contracts with Cavanas, Cottle, Sherrell, Penniman, and Christie Walkers. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion, board?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Guyer?
Me, okay.
Uh-huh, yeah, Commissioner Guyer.
Okay, I would like to preface this, that my remarks, that this has no reflection whatsoever on the aides, they're just nice young people, and I don't know what kind of job they do, this is nothing against them. So, part-time commissioners need full-time aides. Really, I did not see that coming. Kind of funny, because I know district commissioners do not work 40 hours a week after 11 years of being here. A year or so ago, when they were, the aides were hired, part-time aides, at $40,000 a year, I stated it would be a moral, morale killer for the existing staff, and it did. Now making the part-time aides full-time with a starting salary of over $53,000 plus benefits is like a slap in the face to our veteran employees, including Fire, EMS, Sheriff's Office, and here in the courthouse, who have many years of experience, yet getting less pay or only a tad more. But I've figured it out. The commissioners don't care, they don't care about your staff. They, they don't care if you can work out to your retirement years. They don't, they just want you gone, okay? So they can replace you, that's what, that's what this is all about. Your years of service means nothing to them, that has been proven over and over with all the exit employees this, this year, and last year. Oh, they may toss you a little bonus at the end of the year, but that does it right the wrong. The citizens will probably see a reduction in customer service while the county will probably pay for mistakes made by inexperienced people. Both of these are happening today, and I will close with this. I was studying my Bible this morning for my lesson next Sunday, and it was in Ecclesiastes 10. It's like the Lord spoke. Kings and rulers make a grave mistake when they give great authority to people of folly and low positions to people of proven worth. Thank you madam, and I yield back.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. Any other comments from the board? Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Yes.
Okay, okay, you have the floor.
You know, I, I'm going to speak for myself first, and then I'll make my comments more broader. Do I put more than 40 hours in on the, on the books than anybody's part-time commissioner? Without question, I put the time in. I, I carry the weight for the team, don't get it twisted. Don't ever question what you don't understand and don't know. Don't spread the lies, right? No, if you really want to know what I do, well, I'm up to 2 or 3 o'clock in the morning, all the time, constantly. So from my vantage point, from what I see, this is not about being able to do your job, it's to do it even more effectively, connect to the citizens and know what their problems are, right? So I've got a different view. I don't have to see the world the way the next guy sees it. How I wield my office is how I wield it. Ohio does Ohio, Texas does Texas, right? It's, it's different views. Having this flat organization, you ran it, from, from just anybody who's out there that been in business, you've run it too flat, too long. The point is, for me, I'm sending a message, take care of the people. I'm showing you how to advocate, I've shown you 12 years how to advocate. You want fire EMS, you want those sheriff, step up. I don't have to carry your weight if you want to advocate for something, but when the sheriff Miller came over there and asked me, like, okay, I was down with it. It's the next group to step up. You have room, don't, don't isolate these, these young ladies with this, this is cowardly. If you want to advocate and try to make that, make me feel bad about that, the value that they bring is that, no, we recalibrate its value. I don't want to hit a 4 to 1, don't, don't make me evaluate this. Leave it alone. Now, we're going this way, but if you want some help, you want, you want to meet me there, I'm there, y'all know I'm that guy. I say pay them. Don't use the gift trip on this situation, I'm showing you like, look, I'm enlightened, but I ain't got to, I ain't got to get three votes for you. Advocate for yourself. See, privilege only goes so far when you got to work. Uh-huh. So my point is like, no, I get it, don't pick on them, don't do that, like, to pick on, I, I gotta say, like I say, you're picking on the African-American women, I, I just, I have a problem with that. That's what you did, that's what you're doing, and for that, I have a problem. You can't couch it with some type of disclaimer on the front side, don't do that, but if you want to just advocate for your, for the general population, it's not nobody's fault, we're not against anybody, but you got to advocate. Put it on the books. You can do better than that, we already know what the math is. Go down the hallway and knock on the door, that's real work, versus sitting there sending out what we sending out. No, stand up. If you care enough about them, like, I see them, I'm the man who drove this. Like, pay those guys. I don't want to hear it. So if you want, you got to have both sides of the narrative out there, like, I'm cool, First Amendment, freedom of speech, freedom of press, I'm down. But make sure you get both sides of the equation. Down for all the employees, I've been waiting on this. Sheriff Pounds, I'm waiting. Uh-huh, put up. Right, so versus being critical of this, like, that ain't holding nothing back. That's right, it's going to squeeze, that's right, it's raising up, right, we got, we got to deal with this crime, we got to deal with oppression, we got 42, we got to deal with it, open positions, I get it, you got to pay them. Quit building shiny objects, I keep telling y'all that, but I don't have to carry that along. And so for the critics, it says, well, okay, we'll galvanize your votes, it's that simple, count to three, right? But don't, don't, don't marginalize or invalidate and try to say what somebody else like, no, don't make it turn the other way now. Evaluation goes both ways. There's a reason why we chose to go after and get a different classification of aides. Oh no, it's going to a whole nother level. But I, I have to say that because I can't allow that opinion to lie like that without a counter vision. So anyway, ma'am chair, I've said what I had to say, that's sufficient, I yield the floor.
Thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson, and thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. And I'll, if there are no other comments, I'm going to just stand, just a little bit, and we're going to wrap this vote up. First of all, legislative aides are not new to county government, they've been around a long time, and it's, this has been like giving birth to, I only have one, so I can't say five babies. But Douglas County is, is moving from ordinary to extraordinary. My, my thought process is different than the previous administration. I believe in setting high standards and achieving. We chase perfection to achieve excellence every day. Just in comparison, previous administration gave you one project, this administration has given you 84. And we're continuing, when I say projects, they're master projects, vertical, horizontal projects. My Board of Commissioners will tell you that they're completely challenged, this is not a part-time job for them, they're here a lot more than you think they are. And the previous, I've been told that the previous commissioners before their time were not here, but I have high expectations. Let me just speak just for a minute about my commissioners, I took, I did my due diligence. I looked at the physical, fiscal, fiscal impact, and there is none. This is a budget-neutral move. The commissioners are 38.5% under budget in their budgets, I looked at it, if you, if you combine their budgets together, my three commissioners here, they're 38.5% under budget. We are totally 4.5% under budget all over the entire county, that's about $4 billion, and we've looked at expenses, and I challenged the county administrator with something. I said, we can make a move, but it has to be budget-neutral. Our firewall is our fiscal policy reform, and those boundaries are there for a reason. But what we're not going to do is think the way we've always thought, we got to be creative thinkers, we got to change the game up in order to win, and we're going to win under my leadership, and certainly can change when I leave. So I just want to make it clear that I think for the amount of money that's being offered, part-time is unacceptable, full-time is, is needed. How do you track the 40 hours? You track it by this, because they are, the Board of Commissioners or the commissioners already submit time sheets for their, for their staff, the ones that report to them. So, we have some leverage around it, we have a very solid human resources department, so I'm comfortable, I've done my homework, I looked, and this is a very good move as we go forward, because I can't keep expecting all this to happen, and it, you know, I'm just wearing out my commissioners, can you do this, we need that, we trying to make, you know, I'm a dreamer, visionary, and it is what it is, and I expect this county to be great, and it will be great. I said when I hit the door, there's no room for second place, and I can't do it by myself. So with that being said, Board of Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floor, We have a 4-1 vote and the motion carries. Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on to our next item, which is authorization for the chairman to execute an employee contract with John Farah III as part-time investigator with the Solicitor General's Office. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion, board? We have a motion and a second, please prepare to cast your votes. All right, we have a 5-0 unanimous vote and the motion carries. We're going to move on to our business item, which is, we only have one, which is tab number 10, approval of 2021 county-wide commercial property reevaluation in the amount of- in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars to be funded through the general fund and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion, board?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson.
What is this one? Which, which?
County, county clerk, could you just brief us on what this is, please?
I, I heard general fund, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on how I line up this source of funding, that's all.
The fiscal policy reform wall. Can you explain?
I have number ten.
Number ten. Just need some clarification, and then also, we do have our tax assessor here, if you need it further.
That's right. Because I have number ten.
Commissioner, this will be funded out of general fund, it's our expectation that there'll be a revenue increase that will offset the cost of doing this reevaluation. This was brought to you a few work sessions ago, and I believe it was thought that you approved it. The tax assessor is here, if you want to hear from him directly.
Tax assessor, could you come forth and just give us a little more clarification, please?
If you so please.
Yeah.
Question. There you go.
At your pleasure. Please state your name for the records.
Chief Appraiser, Steve Balfour.
Thank you.
And this was discussed in the work session on July nineteenth. This is the countywide commercial property revaluation. It's required to keep our sales ratios above thirty-six percent. It's, our ratios were thirty-nine percent in twenty-nineteen, it's thirty-eight percent this year, and it's trending down. So we need to look at our commercial properties to right value these properties. And we need to do it at this point in time.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ma'am, continue, ma'am chair.
Yes, you may.
All right, thank you, ma'am chair. No, all right, so this is to that point about property taxes. Again, there's, there's a bigger picture, there's object lesson. There's different types of asset classifications. Right, we got industrial, commercial, residential, agriculture, et cetera. We, we put a lot of emphasis on our property taxes, specifically what, around the residential. But there needs to be, no, we, we do care. I, I've been talking about that commercial for quite some time, I'm welcoming you, Director Balfour, because that's important to get our minds around that. We were still doing things within abacus, just like our organization was, was, had to age, and our buildings have aged. I mean, it's like, okay, guys, there is more advanced way of doing life. Right, so this commercial, this, this analysis is very important, that means you're leaving money on the table commercially. So you're talking about, I mean, it, it's not about the millage rate, just get the math right on what you got already. That'll give you immediate relief. So I wanted Steve to just, Director Balfour, just say it. We need to fix this, he's being kind. Yeah, it's gonna cost us almost a quarter million dollars to get this right, but that is our entire digest, what, about five billion dollars, give or take, that he has to do this in commercial, some portion of it, but you get the point. This is our point, we've got to invest in some real things to fix it. We have to be secure in ourselves, saying, no, I mean, it was good, we took it, I mean, it went as far as it could go. It's not a criticism, it's not a cancel, it's an upgrade, it's like, okay, time to go to the next level, time to evolve. Okay, so I appreciate what was before us, I just wanted to clarify what it was, because again, one more time, we let some things go by, like, no, gosh, y'all need to emphasize this, that y'all finally gonna get the math right. You finally gonna get that digest right. And you can say it confidently versus just, well, I mean, we're still using the abacus, and we did the hand route versus doing all three options that allow us to sort of, you know, do the evaluation. So anyway, ma'am chair, I couldn't let that go, that was too important, and I just had to bring it out, so I yield the floor, that was sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
Commissioner Guyer?
Thank you. Mr. Balfour, I'll try to pronounce your, your name correctly, and I apologize for that.
It is correct.
When you get the sales ratio study, is it broken down with commercial, residential, blah, blah, blah? I know our, our overall was thirty-eight percent, and that's the way, we're within the window, but was our commercial low?
It, uh, it was within the acceptable range, but it was low, yes.
What was the commercial part?
The commercial part was thirty-six point, a little above thirty-six.
Okay, so the window is thirty-six to forty-two?
Thirty-six to forty-four.
Forty-four, okay. So is this real estate or personal property?
Real, commercial, industrial.
Okay, have you ever done an audit about the personal property?
No, I have not.
Okay, because they, they make their own returns, and you take it at, I guess, face baggy. But the, what portion of the digest is commercial property?
About forty percent.
It's forty percent?
About.
Okay. Two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars, and we're at thirty-six percent, so how much do you expect to find out there?
I, um...
You, you're, you're saying that we're way under?
I, I'll just, I'll just give you a...
But the sales ratio is showing that we're thirty-six, and we're within the window.
I'll give you an example.
Okay.
I have a property that our current value prior to twenty-twenty-one was two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. It sold for one-point-one-two million. So that would put us at a ratio of below fifty percent, which would be about twenty-five at the forty percent scale.
Okay, is this property that's been on the digest for a long time, that one, that same example you gave us, is it property that's been on the digest a long time? Or the newer?
It's been on, it's been on the digest for a long time.
Okay.
It actually sold in twenty-nineteen for one-point-one.
The newer property, are y'all putting it at market value?
That's what I want to do with the commercial properties, but the, even the land values are low. Commercial land is, but is not at the correct value as we speak. This is why a property for two-hundred-and-sixty thousand can sell for one-point-one.
So are you gonna do all the commercial property in one year?
It is the...
The company that you're hiring?
It, it is our intention to get it done by a third-party company. They can do it within eight months.
So it will be effective for the year twenty-two?
It will be...
Twenty-twenty-two?
It, it will be completed in twenty-twenty-two.
Will the, uh, will the revalue be on the twenty-two digest?
It, it, it's been discussed as we speak to be phased in, but it, we, we will have current, current and correct values on our commercial properties as of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, with that, I yield back, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. Any other questions, board?
Yeah, just, just one, ma'am chair.
Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
Yeah, just one, and, and again, thank you for your due diligence in trying to at least tackle this big item, and I, I know it's a huge item. Now, you did, you did speak, you spoke of that there is a, a, a third-party company that will actually provide the services of doing all the evaluations to get you hopefully above that thirty-six percent, that ratio, I guess.
Correct.
And there's a timeline that you, you mentioned. The goal is to have it for the twenty-twenty-two, or, or is it, that's, that's the goal, but it could linger, it depends upon the brick and mortar that you're dealing with, and so I, I wanna, I wanna manage the expectation, what I'm getting at.
So we do have, we had expecta, expectation for it to be completed in twenty-twenty-two, in time for the digest.
Right.
However, it, I am not sure, I need to get back to the suppliers, considering that it was, it was not looked at at the initial agenda.
Okay, so, so the, the goal is to have it ready?
That is correct.
Got it, and, and again, I, I just, I, I want to make it realistic that, that we, you know, we don't give the general public thinking that we're actually gonna be ready to go by then, and we're not, but here nor there, here nor there. So how close will your team be working with this third party? So now that we get to this point of brick and mortar, and we've got some real true evaluations, that now we need to look at the future and moving forward, so how close?
My commercial appraiser will be shadowing these personnel from Tyler Technologies, who will, if approved, will be doing.
Got it, so they'll stay close to hand and glove?
Absolutely.
To ensure that, now, i- is, would one individual be enough? I'm not, I'm not sure now, I mean, I, I don't know your team well enough to know, that seems like a lot to deal with, one individual.
We currently have one commercial appraiser, and I think we, it's, there is a need for another, but I am, I am taking on assisting that commercial appraiser. So I will also lend some of my time to shadow in these people.
So what I'm alluding to, though, is that you're, you're short-staffed. You, you need personnel to really be, be truly effective. And I, I, I just didn't want this board to, to think that doing this is just gonna be, you know, well-done with a third party, but yet, when we look at after that third party has done their, made their investment in our, in our real estate, where we are after that. And I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned with making sure that you've got the staff you need, yet along, using that third party to assure that this two-sixty-five won't be needed again, you know, when we get now down to the personal property of commercial, so.
I appreciate you highlighting that fact, and it's, it, I really appreciate that, but at this stage, I will also be looking at restructuring, but I am working with what I inherited as we speak, and I think we're doing a fine job.
Okay, so, so this will at least get you started?
Absolutely.
And, and get you at least to the, to the line of hopefully thirty, better than thirty-six percent, that ratio?
Absolutely.
However, however, the real need, which I, I, I look forward to hearing from your team, you and your team, what, what the real needs in addition to this ask looks like, because I know this, this, this just can't be it. I know enough about real estate to know that this is just not it.
That is correct, but this will put me on a path to be very, a lot more efficient than we are currently.
Understood, because I, I just feel like we, we gotta address that personal property, you know, as well. And, and there's a lot that's, that we're gonna be missing out on if we don't, but I, I get the baby steps in trying to get there, and I respect that, but I, I, I look forward to, again, you and Madam Subidan, you know, working through the magic of the true real requests to continue this county moving forward and not missing out on a lot of real estate and/or, or, or tax values that are out there, basically, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
Okay, I yield back, ma'am chair.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you so much. Tax assessor. Oh, I'm sorry, I saw you do, I have one for Commissioner Cartheness, I'm sorry.
Mr. Balfour, I would just request that when you get ready to do the residential, that you skip over District Three and start with everybody else first. I'd appreciate it, though, but in, in all honesty, this right here actually helps the residential. Because it takes some of the burden off of our backs in order to make up what's needed to run the county, and so this commercial piece is, is critical to making sure that our commercial businesses, which we love having, our industrial businesses, which we love having, because they're not a real burden on the taxing of schools and buyer resources and all of that. They have a low footprint, you know, in, in terms of the services that we offer, yet they yield a high value for those who are employed by them and those who use their services and good.
Thank you, Commissioner Carthen, I, that is correct, and I am guided by the Department of Revenue Guidelines, and I'm, I must be fair and uniform to the county, and this is what I'm striving for, fairness and uniformity.
Thank you so much, with that, ma'am chair, I yield.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen, thank you so much, Mr. Steve Balfour. Certainly, Board of Commissioners, our goal is to take the pressure off our homeowners and property owners, you know, our homeowners particularly, and this move will definitely certainly take some of the pressure off. And we appreciate Mr. Balfour bringing this to our attention, that our commercial property is off and needs some tweaking to make sure that, number one, we in line with what we supposed to be at the state, and then that's certainly, I wanted to say, surprise the citizens later, but we'll see what it does, and it, this two-hundred-and-fifty, um, two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars will pay for itself. Sounds like it's gonna, it's gonna, we'll reap some benefits. Board of Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floor, we've had some discussion. We have a motion and a second, please prepare to cast your vote. We have a five-o unanimous vote, and the motion carries. Board of Commissioners, we're gonna move to resolutions. Tab number eleven is consideration of Fox Hall Resort request for annexation into Chattahoochee Hills, Georgia. Board of Commissioners, what I'm gonna do, I will yield the floor to our legal counsel to allow him to elaborate on the subject matter, and then, of course, he will yield to our own manager of planning and zoning. Legal counsel, or should I say county, county attorney Bernard, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am chair, Commissioners, before you tonight, I want to set this up for purpose of the record, and then Ron will make the staff recommendation in the form of a resolution. The owners of Fox, what we know as Fox Hall Resort petitioned or made application to the city of Chattahoochee Hills to be annexed into the city of Chattahoochee Hills. That statute is different than normal annexations, because this would be a jump from one county to another county. As a result, we requested a hearing, as, I mean, a meeting, a joint meeting as required under the statute. Because of the party's time limitations and COVID, we agreed in writing to a consent extension of that time timely, and we met as a joint meeting publicly between the two governments. We then, based on the request of this body, had staff meet independently with the staff of the city of Chattahoochee Hills, and now pursuant to the statute and pursuant to our agreement, it's our time to make a decision whether we are going to, and we've used the word objection before, but whether we're gonna object or not, but just so you know, the, the words objection are interchangeable under the statute with oppose and disapprove. So when you hear oppose and disapprove, that really means we're object, recommending, objecting. So I just want to make sure, if you hear those words for the first time, that's actual words out of the statute. And if the chairman would allow me, Ron is going to present the staff report in the form of a resolution. If the board is so inclined after discussion, we would ask the board to adopt the resolution opposing and disapproving of the proposed annexation, which would then be delivered to the city of Chattahoochee Hills as required by law. Ron?
Thank you, Ken, that was a nice tee-up. Good evening, ma'am chair, Commissioners.
Good evening. Good evening.
County, county administrator Subidan. Yes, as, as Ken stated, I would like to read into the record the resolution for tonight. Whereas on April first, twenty-twenty-one, the city of Chattahoochee Hills, Georgia notified Douglas County and Fox, that Fox Hall Investors LLC, the owner of a one-thousand-ninety-two-point-fifteen-acre property, commonly known as Fox Hall Resorts, had requested annexation into the city of Chattahoochee Hills, and whereas such annexation would constitute the first annexation across the Douglas County-Fulton County line by the city of Chattahoochee Hills, and whereas OCGA thirty-six thirty-six twenty-three sets forth the procedure to be followed for an initial annexation across county lines, and whereas consistent with that statute, Douglas County filed a written request for a meeting with the city, and whereas the county and city entered into an intergovernmental agreement that provided that the city and county would meet on or before July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, and whereas that intergovernmental agreement further provided that Douglas County would have, through and including August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, to file an objection, and whereas the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and the mayor and council of the city of Chattahoochee Hills the City of Chattahoochee Hills met virtually in a joint session on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas an additional meeting among the, the staffs, the attorneys, the mayor of Chattahoochee Hills, and a representative from the Douglas County Water and Sewer Authority occurred on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. And whereas the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, the governing authority of Douglas County, has determined to oppose and disapprove to the annexation pursuant to OCGA thirty-six thirty-six twenty-three D. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Douglas County opposes and disapproves to the annexation by the City of Chattahoochee Hills of the property identified in the notice, commonly known as Fox Hall Resorts, be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners finds the following non-exclusive, non-exhaustive reasons to support the opposition and disapproval. The annexation is not reasonable for the long-range economic and overall well-being of the entities impacted. The city has failed to articulate how services will be provided and paid for. The nine point six-five millage tax the city intends to impose is estimated to generate a little over seventy thousand in revenue. As development occurs, the need for services will increase, but funding based on the data available would be inadequate. If the city intends to provide services by agreement with the county, the Douglas County residents and businesses in Fox Hall will bear a greater tax burden without any increase in services. Although the mayor discussed the Chattahoochee Hills brand and that, that may attract some types of residents, there is no evidence or indication that such a brand aids the resort development. As noted below, the annexation will undermine Douglas County's comprehensive planning process for its recently identified mixed-use resort character area. Easily identifiable direct financial impacts to the county include the potential loss of insurance premium tax proceeds and diminished transportation funding as the roads in Fox Hall are removed from consideration for funds the county receives from the state. The Water and Sewer Authority has invested three point two million dollars running sewer to that area. If the city were to slow or reduce development in the area, it may slow the authority's recruitment of that investment. The health, safety, and welfare of the public is negatively impacted by the proposed annexation. After considerable study and input from the public and other stakeholders, the county amended its comprehensive plan in twenty eighteen to create the mixed-use resort character area, of which Fox Hall and another proposed development, the Preserve, are the primary parts. Resort uses in this area are, as planned, were intended as an economic benefit to the county and other county businesses and not merely as a residential area. The city has acknowledged that its development model differs from the, from the counties and the city previously objected to the Fox Hall Resort as proposed. The city's zoning regulations require seventy percent of land be set aside as green space, which is much more than what Fox Hall's current plan shows. Those county planning efforts and the public benefits of the mixed-use resort character will be diminished, if not destroyed, if this area is taken into Chattahoochee Hills. If annexed, while in some circumstances would be required to seek comments, the Douglas County Water and Sewer Authority, as well as the county, would have a much more limited role in future decisions regarding land development, metropolitan river protection, and stormwater management in the area. The annexation will result in negative financial impacts because of the nature of Chattahoochee Hills. It has a lean budget and a small staff, and it is anticipated that many municipal services will be provided in Fox Hall through an intergovernmental, intergovernmental and/or SDS agreement with Douglas County. Under such circumstances, the county, county's constituents, that will be the residents and business owners in Fox Hall, will bear an additional tax burden without receiving increased or enhanced services. Some obvious areas of concern for providing services include animal control, the courts, economic development, emergency management, EMS, E-nine-one-one, fire, GIS, municipal elections, parks and recreation, police, stormwater, and tax collection. The city has not offered any outlines, much less proposed agreements, that would mitigate the additional burdens. The potential impacts to the public school system in Douglas County when the residential areas are built out are indeterminable. However, because the governing authorities of the school system and the county are all elected by the same constituents, the county has a greater incentive to be sensitive to those impacts than a city seated in another county. There is no tangible benefit to the owner from annexation. The Fox Hall mixed-use master plan was initially approved in two thousand and nine with a number of variances and waivers to accommodate the development. Since then, Douglas County staff has accommodated many requests to facilitate the development success. One of the few major requests the county denied relates to the construction standards for some of the roads and bridges on the site. The county insists, based on the county's transportation and fire department's position on safety, that the bridges be built to GDOT standards and all roads, even private roads, be built to county standards. Given the county's efforts to work with the developer and while there, and while there may be other concessions it seeks, relief from the road and bridge standards are a primary motive for the developer to seek annex into Chattahoochee Hills. Any such concessions only weaken the development and its potential to be safe and sustainable economic boon for Douglas County, with no discernible benefit to the developer other than the short-term and temporary cost savings. Further, if public safety services will be provided by Douglas County forces through agreement, then the county will insist that the roads meet its and GDOT's standards. Also, because the city is not an issuing authority for stormwater review and it requires third-party contractors for portions of development review, the developer's approvals will be slowed or delayed. The county reserves the right to raise additional issues and facts related to the factors set forth in OCGA thirty-six thirty-six twenty-three.
Thank you so much, Mr. Roberts. Thank you so much for the second and final reading.
Thank you.
Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to adopt staff recommendations and the resolution is read?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Board? We have a motion and a second, please prepare to cast your votes.
Madam Chair, technically speaking, for purposes of the minutes, it's on the agenda as a neutral item, so you need a hand vote to approve the staff recommendation and opposition and disapproval of the annexation rather than a computer vote. Because the way it's written on the item, it would not show up in the minutes correctly.
Okay. Okay, just, Attorney Bernard, can I just restate what I just said to the board to allow us to go with a hand vote?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Can I just restate what I just said to allow the board?
Yeah, you have a motion and a second, just, I think you can say we're going to do it by hand vote.
That's fine, we have a motion and a second, Board. We have a motion and a second, and when I call your district, please respond accordingly. Your hand, raise your hand. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Of the, all in favor that we adopt the staff recommendation and the resolution is read, please indicate by right, raising your right hand, okay? We have a five oh unanimous vote and the motion carries.
Madam Chair, one comment, please, on that. Because of the time sensitivity, if, before y'all leave tonight, if you would please see Lisa Watson for signatures on the resolution, because we have some time sensitivity to get it back out, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Commissioners, we will take care of the request as soon as this, our meeting ends. Thank you so much, Attorney Bernard, and thank you again, Manager Ron Roberts. We're going to move on to our consent agenda. Board of Commissioners, and typically what I usually do, just said we will accept it as read, but tonight it's just only three items and I want to read those. Tab number twelve is authorization to advertise for a public hearing for the purposes of adoption of the transportation and connect Douglas Transit Title VI plans. Title, tab number thirteen is authorization to execute an agreement with Dirty Rats Demolition and Junk Removal LLC for the Mount Carmel Park demolition and cleanup project at a total cost of thirty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars, to be funded through the contingency funds and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. And tab number fourteen is authorization to issue an RFQ for fire renovation and cost analysis for fire station number four. Board of Commissioners, that concludes our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Second?
Set.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Board of Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any item? Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, all right, I may, I may break this up, but my bad. All right, so I want to make sure I heard what I heard, in that I heard two things on twelve and thirteen. I heard on twelve, this is dealing with obviously, what was it, Title VI? The public hearing. That triggers me for, that is a trigger for federal contracts and grants, transportation bill, and I noticed that in that organizational structure, I did not see the grant rider, which I thought was important, so I'm going to make a condition associated with this, that you will bring forth, county administrator, that particular role, which obviously brings us a yield. Second, on thirteen, I heard you mentioned that we're going to fund that out of contingency. Madam Guyda brought it up before and I agree and acknowledge with her that we're out of money in our contingency of about three thousand dollars. I need a plan that shows how you're going to fulfill that or fund that, or reset it is what I'm looking for out of, obviously, as we said, the military. Those are just two simple conditions in which you'll just bring back later, I just wanted it for the record. Again, grant rider, a role, not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars to support the things that we're talking about. And number two, dealing with our contingency, well, if you only got three thousand dollars and you're trying to take money out, you may want to replenish that, unless you're pulling it from somewhere else, which I haven't seen. So bring back the, you need to bring back how you're going to fund that. I yield, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm, okay, thank you, Vice Chairman. I'm going to allow our vice chair of the finance team to tell you how much we have. We have a little more than, a lot more than three thousand.
We've got more than three thousand because one was posted and one wasn't, so I think we ended up with ninety thousand. Yeah.
So we have ninety thousand.
In that contingency fund. But this is just for the hearing, this is just calling for the public hearing, so.
Yeah, I, I figured I would cause confusion, just two separate things. I'm just making my point. Kent, county clerk, did you get what I asked for as a condition? Let's just let it stay there.
Yes, sir, to bring forth a new grant rider.
Yes.
And to explain how we will replenish the funds and the contingency.
Replenish the overall general contingency fund for the county. That was my point. Where do we, I know we're down to three thousand, did something come through that we didn't know about?
Uh huh, remember we had a reclass?
Stay with me. All right, so the point is, we want to spread across everything, we haven't seen it. I want the reclassification across the board.
Okay, we can do that.
That's all we're asking for.
Okay.
Yeah. That was it, just a condition, it doesn't stop what you've done, Madam Chair.
Okay. We're good. We have a motion and a second on the floor. We have a motion and a second, please prepare to cast your votes. We, we have a five oh unanimous vote and the motion carries. Thank you so much, clerk, for looking at me, my attention span drifted off for a second. Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on to the approval of our.
Madam Chair, first point of personal privilege.
Yes.
I would like to let the board and the constituents and the staff know that I am getting ready to leave to head over to the Chapel Hill HOA meeting. So I'm more than a full-time commissioner, because I probably won't get out of there until about eight-thirty, nine o'clock tonight, and then get home to my family, so if it is okay with you, I will exit now.
You want to go on this one expense? You got to go.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
All right. We have the approval of expenses coming before, it's Board of Commissioners, tab number fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve our expenses?
So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Board? We have a motion and a second, please prepare to cast your votes. Thank you, Commissioner Carthen. Okay. We have a four oh unanimous vote and the motion carries. Thank you. We're going to move into our announcements. Before we do that, I want to certainly yield to our Board of Commissioners to see if there are any announcement that you would like to make prior to our Communications Director, Rick Mark, Martin, coming forth. Anyone?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'll take mine, Rick. Yes, the, we're at our fifth annual Homeowners Association or HOA Boot Camp will be this coming Saturday from eight o'clock in the morning to twelve noon. It will be virtual for participants, we recognize in the times that we are right now, but it will be totally virtual beginning at eight o'clock. We have a, a, a good set of, a, a good program. The first part will be what I want to call, what we call a citizen's policing. We're going to get into a topic regarding that. I thank you Sheriff Powell for participating, County Administrator for participating. We've got Oric Curry, who's our current president, of Brookmont, who's going to participate in that as well. And we've got Sanya Compton, the solicitor general, who's going to participate, and of course, we've got an at-large person who's going to facilitate that. So community policing, that, that can work both with commercially and residentially. What does that mean for us? Again, I recognize pay, let's have this conversation, let's be honest, y'all know how we do it in our district, though this is open for everybody. The second part of our HOA Boot Camp is obviously education. We've got some expert partners that have always been here all along. We appreciate fellow Commissioner Marvin Arrington coming across on the river with some other colleagues to talk about, obviously, education, as Madam Carthen just went to an HOA. They're important. One of the things I will be promoting as we get through this redistricting process to do more of neighborhood planning organizations, right? What, what my aid will be focused on, okay, now you need to get out there, let's, let's spread our wings. Let's collect even deeper with our citizens. Everything they just showing up every two weeks, we got to get out there and touch the citizens and hear what their heart is during the day. So we, we're looking forward to having a deep conversation with, obviously, in this forum, it's been very thoughtful, this is our fifth annual, and this is out of this forum that we came up with getting rid of pipe cities. It is out of this forum that we thought about some of the, the best things that we've ever advanced came out of this. We put real work in and we're just getting started. So I'm looking forward to this fifth annual. Again, eight AM, there will be a link that will go out to check what's happening, check our external affairs, and that information will go out accordingly regarding that. Again, it is virtual from eight to twelve this coming Saturday. Thank you, Madam Chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Any other announcements from our board? Okay, our director of communications, please come forth. Mr. Rick Martin, you have the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, County Administrator Subidan and staff. Remaining announcements to make, on behalf of District Three Commissioner Tarynia Carthen, the mobile mammogram unit will be returning to the Douglas County Courthouse Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, for employees and the public. All individuals are interested, who are interested in a screening must register using the link on the flyer. Please sign up as soon as possible, space is limited, no walk-ins will be accepted at this time. If you have any questions regarding the event, please contact mamosaves.com at six seven eight six two six zero three four two, and the information is on the website, celebrate douglascounty.com. Douglas County Small Business Grant Program continues accepting applications from Douglas County Small Businesses for twenty-five hundred dollar grants. To apply, please visit www-elizabethbaptist.org, or for more information, email tstewartstanley@co.douglas.ga.us. September Saturdays Festival Celebration at the Douglas County Courthouse is scheduled for Saturday, September twenty-eighth, with Heroes Day and a Touch a Truck Experience, and Saturday, September twenty-fifth, Family Day Fun and Games Festival. Both Saturdays scheduled from eleven A to five P, with food vendors, music, marching bands, and much more. In light of COVID, we are monitoring day by day, week by week, and if things do continue in a way that, where COVID is a factor, we do and will go virtually. Cobb and Douglas Public Health will be offering free COVID-nineteen vaccines at Deer Lake Park in the county, address is twenty-one oh five Mack Road. The first dose, which was given on July thirty-first, people can get the second dose on August twenty-first, from two PM to four PM. The Pfizer vaccine is being administered to individuals twelve years of age and older. For COVID-nineteen information, the public is invited to call the COVID-nineteen Call Center at one eight three three nine seven four three three six six. That is one eight three three nine seven four. to call the COVID-19 Call Center at 1-833-974-3366. That is 1-833-974-3366. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners does hereby announce that the milage rate will be set at a meeting to be held Tuesday, August 31st at 10:00 a.m. Public hearings will be held on August 24th at 10:00 a.m. virtually, and 6:00 p.m. that same day virtually as well, and also on August 31st at 10:00 a.m. virtually. The information to register virtually is on our website, celebrate douglascounty.com. After the August 31st hearing, following the presentation of the current year's tax digest and levy, along with the history of the tax digest and levy for the past five years, a military will be adopted. Last but not least, Keep Douglas County Beautiful, WSA and the Douglas County Master Gardeners will be hosting the 2021 Rivers Alive Cleanup on Saturday, September 4th at 9:00 a.m. at The Nature Trails here at the Douglas County Courthouse, 8700 Hospital Drive, 30134 here in Douglasville. For more information, the public is invited to, please email to bria cobb@co.douglas.ga.us. And again, I want to remind everyone, all this information is on the county's website, celebrate douglascounty.com. Chairman Jones, I yield back to you.
All right, thank you so much, Communications Director Rick Martin. Before we certainly close in our meeting, I want to encourage the citizens of Douglas County to still remain vigilant with trying and your best to mitigate this virus. We are in this together. I've said repeatedly, if we take this virus lightly, it will take us. I am, because of our numbers here in Douglas County, I'm asking and certainly pleading the recommendation of masks, if you will wear your mask in public settings, and also just encouraging you to consider taking the vaccine. This has certainly been a marathon, and certainly is not a sprint. And we are in the second half of the game, and right now Douglas County fully vaccinated rate is 36%. And our first, those who have received one shot is, I believe, 42%. So we still have a ways to go before we reach herd immunity. So I'm encouraging you, along with the Board of Commissioners, who have just exhausted ourselves in educating, providing education and literature and anything possible to just educate you about this virus. I encourage you to continue to wash your hands repeatedly throughout the day, watch your social distancing, and also certainly wear your mask in public settings. Board of Commissioners, if there's nothing else to come before this body, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.